Mike, that looks like we have a quorum. I'd like to remind all board members, guests to ask to be recognized by the chair. If they wish to speak, this meeting is being recorded. Okay, our first item on the agenda is acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence. Gail, did we get any correspondence in the past two weeks? Do you know of?
There were three public hearing notices as noted on the agenda.
Okay. All right.
And they're in the folder.
Okay, great.
Ron, this is Christine. I have a comment. So yes, I actually attended one of these hearings because it was another agenda item that is involving the 133 Essex and Chabaco Road. And at that meeting, there was a public hearing which we received notice of on Saturday for the scenic road tree removal for the Chabaco Road project. This hearing, I'm not sure where the miscommunication or whatever it is. This is dated October 1st and we received it on the 23rd, five days after the hearing. So I'm not sure, it doesn't do us any good, receiving a notice five days after the hearing. So something is terribly wrong that needs to be fixed. I'm not sure whose job this is. I don't know who did not forward this to the board on time. But this was a public hearing that should have been to the board weeks ago. Additionally, I brought up the fact that Mr. Karpowicz had reached out to me two weeks ago, and I still do not see his correspondence in any of our folders. And I believe at that time, there was maybe an email from Ms. Ayavani and maybe another one that I'm forgetting. So why is there such a breakdown in the forwarding of correspondence to the board?
Can't answer that. I can't answer that. I think the Ayavani letter was sent to each.
May I respond to Mr. Karpowicz's email?
Yeah.
I received the email and I forwarded the resident a response. It was not a planning board matter. It was a matter for the building inspector. The building inspector was copied and he and the resident will get together to resolve the issue. It's not, you know, it's a matter of following up on the permits that were issued, which is not the purview of the planning board or as I understand.
Thank you, Gail.
The resident was responded to.
Thank you.
The email I received was requested to be forwarded to the board. So is that ignored typically?
Well, if it was received by you, how could you would have to forward it to the board?
I did. I actually forwarded it to Gail. So I'm concerned where the breakdown in communication is. The resident reached out to me.
Was it regarding a building inspector matter or was it in something else?
They wanted.
Matter.
Okay, so Christina, it's been explained that it was a building inspector matter. What did you want the planning board to do with it?
I'm just curious. So if something is addressed to the planning board or it says distribute to the planning board, that's ignored? So people that receive it have that authority to ignore, distribute to the board? Just for clarification.
It wasn't ignored. It was responded to and forwarded to the right party to manage the request.
So what did you want the planning board to do?
Distribute to the board was ignored, correct?
If it wasn't a planning board matter, Christina, what did you want the board to do? Well, going forward, what's the vision here on this particular case?
I'm really just trying to get some clarification. If someone, if an email is sent in and it says please distribute to the board, someone has the purview and decides whether they will or not, is that what I'm hearing correctly?
If it's not a planning board matter, then I don't think the planning board needs to hear about it. We've got enough emails coming in.
Okay, so then let's just go back to the scenic route. We received notice of the public hearing five days after the hearing. Can someone explain that to me?
It's not.
Mr. Chairman, you have a comment? I think that, I think it would be useful for us to sort of assume that people are acting in good faith, at least on the matter of the building inspector matter. If, you know, if it's something that we should, we should see, you know, Gail can put it in our packets. If you'd like us to see it, Christina, then forward it along. I think that's fine. And I think it sounds like Gail worked, was operating in good faith. As for the hearing, I would agree that we should have hearing notices in advance of the hearings. And that, you know, whether it was when the town received it, I have no idea. But let's, let's assume that we're all acting in good faith here and that timely receipt of correspondence is a goal. And that's a reasonable, a reasonable thing. But I can't imagine anybody was intentionally withholding information. So thank you.
It's my understanding that something is received and it should go through the town clerk and it's stamped. I just don't see where these were stamped on any of them. So I'm curious, where are these going and why is there a lack of communication?
This is Sue.
Sue.
Yeah, correspondence that comes in to the mail to the various departments doesn't get a stamp from the clerk. So my guess is that often notices of public hearings will come in via the mail and go into a various department boxes. I don't know what box that goes in, whether it's in the planning or a planning board. But I think that it's, that it's easy to not, to not see something in one of those boxes. And I don't know what Gail's, how often Gail is in town hall or if she picked it up or if it got shuffled between boxes. But I think Sarah makes a good point that we're working in good faith to try to get those out. But it's, I don't know when that one come in or what box it was put in or who had first access to it. But I think that's, they don't get stamped is my, is my point.
Well, I actually had a conversation with Diane today. And anytime that the town receives a public hearing notice, they should be forwarded to her and she posts them. So the entire town has notice of this hearing. So someone is not following protocol with a buttered town notification. So maybe town needs to review public hearings when they receive them because this is just inappropriate and unacceptable to receive notice five days after the hearing happened. We can't do our jobs if we don't have notice. So I actually would like this noted for the record that we received notice on Saturday, five days after the actual hearing.
So noted. Okay. So at this time, allow any public comments on items that are not on the agenda with a limited time. Does anyone from the public want to speak? Okay. I, as I stated a little before the meeting, the legal notice for the hearing isn't until seven. So I'm going to jump the informal discussion on one Spyrock Hill subdivision ahead. And I'm going to turn this over to Tim McDonald, who is going to make a brief informal presentation to us on this subdivision. So, Tim, take it away.
Thank you, Ron. Give me a second here. You seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Ron, thanks for setting this up. I know it was short notice. But I had met with Sue Brown in the town as well as Sarah Melish, the head of the ZBA, just to get some informal feedback on some intentions for the property at one Spyrock Hill Road. I'll just start by saying, I'm actually speaking for the Kinder family. They're actually on the call right now. Kurt and Liz Kinder are here. Just a little background, they moved into one Spyrock Hill Road in 1967. This is them, Peter, Suzie, Liz and Kurt. And what's precipitated this, this request has been that Suzie Kinder passed away in June of this year. And I should also note that I'm married to Liz Kinder. And we moved our family to this house at one Spyrock Hill Road. Just in September, we put our kids in school there. And Liz and Kurt are the heirs of the property. And they want to continue what Suzie had actually initiated a year before, which was the survey and subdivision of the property. And the intention of this is really for us to just get some feedback to see whether there is something significant that we have missed, whether there's something egregious about what we're proposing. But in the end, the premises for, we'd like to propose us turning one lot into three lots. Here, it's a 1.7 acre, 7-8 acre lot. And we'd like to create three lots from one. And we are in zoning District A, which is single family. The minimum lot area here is 22,500 square feet. And these lots, as they're shown, are within that limit. We intend to abide by all the setbacks, front side and rear, although there is an issue with the frontage, which I'll talk about in a second. These are the abutters, as I understand them, though there may be a definition that I'm not aware of. But as I understand, the properties that abut directly the property, and I just think it's important to notice that there's a kind of level of density here that seems to be in line with what's around us. Just to position, just to kind of, those of you who don't know where this is, it's Spyrock Hill. It's up on a ledge that's about 50 feet above C Street down below. So it's outside of any water conservation areas. But it's a, this is the driveway right off Spyrock Hill, which ties right into Summer Street. Here's a view of C Street looking southeast. And it's important to understand that this is a very steep slope here. In fact, it's impossible to put a driveway into this property from C Street. So I just wanted that to be noted. Here's a view from the railroad tracks looking in the other direction. And again, the steep slope of the ledge here that goes all the way to the property line. So the existing site, as I mentioned, is a 1.78 acre property. And we've gotten it surveyed and some of the topography, kind of essential topography on the new properties that we were proposing. But the critical issue, as I've understood, the zoning bylaws has to do with the frontage of the property. Now, I think the premise of front, the issue of frontage and zoning is that 150 feet for each property should be fronting the street. And from that frontage, you should be able to access your property. It's a little bit different here, given the fact that C Street, the property is so steep there. But in total, we, the property has 400, just over 443 feet of frontage. Now, 450 feet is, would be required for three lots into one here. And so this is, in our estimation, the only variance that would be required. And that's what we're asking of the zoning and the zoning ZBA. But there's also a question of how one accesses the properties. And so what we're proposing is the existing driveway as shown here. It's our understanding that two lots can use one existing driveway to service those lots. And so we'd like to do that with this lot. And then just, just to note, if you were wondering what that big circle was, there's a large rock that we'd like to keep there and have that organized, how the cars come in and out of the property. But the third lot would be accessed from, directly from Spyrock Hill, 10 feet away from the existing driveway, which I believe is required. That said, in discussions with some folks at the town, the idea of a second curb cut maybe wasn't the best. In other words, if we didn't have to put another curb cut in here, one thought would be that we just access that lot directly from the curb cut, the existing curb cut, which looks like this. And it seems like a fairly reasonable thing to do. But I do understand that, after reading the bylaws, that if you access, you can't access three, more than two lots from one driveway or it becomes technically a subdivision with significant road size and cul-de-sac, which would not work here. So we're open to the idea of a completely separate driveway here. But if the board would be amenable to eliminating that second curb cut, if that would make more sense, we'd be open to that as well. And then importantly, we're thinking about the existing abutters and neighbors around. And we would, of course, landscape and visually separate the new properties from the existing properties around. We're also proposing fairly small size houses. These are 2,400 square foot homes with garages and decks. But we wanted to make that point because we're not really interested in kind of the large mansion approach to these lots. We think that a smaller footprint would be more affordable for people. So we'd like to try to keep that, keep the price low. We're within the coverage allowances, we believe, within the zoning rules. And I just also want to say that my family and I have moved into the existing house that's been here since the 60s. And our, one thought is that once we develop the properties, that we might move into this property. That's, that's one of the discussions going on at the moment. But I do want to say something about myself because while I'm the husband of the owner, I'm also an architect, a developer and a builder and from Philadelphia. And we've been in business for, since 1997. And we focus primarily on high performance, net zero energy, single family homes and apartments. And while we haven't designed the home yet, we've got lots of different examples of buildings that we've designed. And this is one that's fairly similar to this site. It's in a wooded area of North Philadelphia. It's also got, it's a flag lot that is accessed from another driveway. And it's a very similar scale home too. It's a very simple bar-like building with a garage and decks on the end. And like I said, even though we haven't designed it yet, the materiality of the, of the house, we'd like to kind of merge into the existing landscape and have it fit within the existing landscape. So here are just some examples of how that works for us and the interiors. This is a super insulated passive house designed, home that uses about 75% less energy than a typical building. And that would be in the intention of the houses that we would design for this site. So that's all. If there are any questions, be open to discussing that.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions from the board?
Ron, I have a few comments.
Yes, Gary.
Well, the level of density you're developing is not really the purview of the planning board. You have every right to build as big of a house as anybody else. Once you have three lots, your actual frontage does not have to provide access to the site. That's not part of the A and R regulation. But the biggest stumbling block here is where is your frontage for that middle lot? You need 150 feet of frontage and there's no hardship for a zoning board to grant you a variance of less than what's the required frontage.
Yeah, so currently there's, the way the lots have been divided provides for only about 50 feet of frontage for that middle lot. And so that is in fact, the variance that we're asking of the ZBA. And again, the, my understanding is that with the two lots being accessed from the one driveway, that would be approved through an A and R process. It's really the third lot that, that, because if that third lot wasn't there, then there would be 150 feet of frontage.
I was on the ZBA for a number of years and this doesn't seem like there's a hardship here to give a variance to something that's really, really critical, really fundamental, is having frontage. But that's the ZBA's determination. I'll throw out an idea that, you know, you could potentially have those, both of those driveways you've got there, let them all be part of the middle lot to give them more frontage, you know, just to provide an easement so that one of the properties can use one of the driveways. I don't, I don't know if you, what's your total frontage on Spyrock Hill? Is it 300 feet?
Give me one second. No, it's.
Less than that.
It is, yeah.
That's a big stumbling block that you'll have to sort out with the ZBA, not with us.
Right, right.
And as far, you made a mention of something that I think you may have interpreted our laws incorrectly. You can have three lots serviced from a single driveway, a common driveway. You just need a special permit. And I would say, my take on it is Spyrock Hill is a steep hill, has a lot of water runoff and such, also a lot of traffic. And so it's a perfect place to have the least amount of driveway curb cuts possible. So to have different houses served from the same driveway is, is very, very rational and logical to do. But you have a frontage problem. That's my take on it. That's the biggest issue here.
Correct.
Kudos to the whole family and all and best wishes. But I think that's a big stumbling block because if we start giving, if the town starts giving variances to a fundamental thing such as frontage, all sorts of properties could be developed in town. But again, that's not our purview.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Sarah.
It turns out that when I was on the planning board in, I don't know, 2000, maybe, a long time ago, this lot came before the planning board for an A and R. And we denied it because the A and R was not required access from, A and R is required that you be able to access from the frontage and the steep slope. Well, that's one of the reasons you can deny it for steep slopes, in which we did. It was denied, the A and R application was denied for steep slopes. I distinctly recall it. Anyway, so good for you for coming with a subdivision. That is the right way to do this, in my opinion. The second thing is there are, now I am not, I would have to look at the subdivision control law and to be sure. But there is another way to do that, which is to make your cul-de-sac, propose it as a road. And then you have your frontage on the road that is the cul-de-sac. And so, and that is also part of the subdivision process. And there are ways to, so that's, that's just, but I agree with Gary that frontage is an important thing that we, that is, it's important for a range of reasons. So hard to tell where we are with it at this moment because we're not actually seeing the plans. But that, anyway, enough.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments from the board? Okay, Tim, it looks like you have some work to do.
Ron.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lauren.
Yeah, thanks. Just to comment on lot one, I see that the topography is mapped only for what is considered the critical part of the site. So I can't understand the whole map, but the proposed dwelling and the orientation of it is doing quite a bit of cutting into some of the steepest slopes on the site. And the, you know, the kind of valley where the water would naturally travel. So I would urge you to think about that, about, you know, if you can minimize the regrading that happens on the site, minimize the clearing, the regrading, the, think about the way the water is raining on the site. And I'm not sure how that circular driveway at the top, which is at about elevation 80, would access the house of which some of the house is down at, you know, the deck is down at 60. So there's a 20-foot grade change happening over that lot one. So even in the orientation of the house, that might be something that you would consider.
Yeah, I've looked very carefully so far at the grading. And there are a couple of ways to handle that, but I totally agree that's, that for that lot, that is the, the challenge. I would also say that my understanding is that, and correct me if I'm wrong because this is, because I'm from Philadelphia, but the zoning process, if the zoning, if ZBA approves the variance around the frontage, my understanding is that a subdivision with a cul-de-sac and a road, I've looked at that and the requirements for that cul-de-sac and the road are such that it wouldn't work whatsoever on the, on the lot because it's just too large of a, of an issue. But if the ZBA were to give the approval for that variance, what is the purview of the planning board at that point? What would be the, the issues to, to address?
It would be a subdivision. It would have to comply with subdivision control law. I believe, correct? Correct if I'm wrong, Gary.
Yeah.
You're saying that if the, if a variance was given for frontage, you would, an A and R of three lots, which is not really a subdivision, it's an approval not required. It does subdivide the land, but it's not.
Right.
Whether we would grant it or not, I've never seen this happen before. I would definitely want to consult with town council. Got an attorney to consult with, but I wouldn't even venture a guess on that one. But that's, to me, the biggest stumbling block. Sarah's idea of creating a subdivision road in there makes, has a little bit of traction to my mind. But you've got to think this through a bit more.
Okay. All right. Looks like we're right on time. Thank you, Tim. Looks like you have some work to do. Let us know how you make out.
Will do. Thank you all for your time. Really appreciate it.
All right. So before I open the hearing, I just have a couple of comments to make to our audience. Just a little background information. For those who don't know, the planning board, we're a seven-member board elected for three-year terms. We're charged with overseeing and compliance with state statutes and local zoning bylaws. We also deal with land use planning by creation, amendment of new and existing local bylaws. So going forward, there's the role of the applicant during this procedure. The applicant will present his application and documentation, which they have. The rolling of, the role of the planning board members would be to review the applicant's documentation, raise questions, make observations and comments, request clarifications or additional information. Role of the audience to observe and participate in the public, in the planning board public hearings and present their observations, opinions and/or documentation to support their point of view. Once the planning board members finish with their questions, comments, the public will be invited to participate with questions, comments and testimony. Some guiding principles to, for everyone participating tonight. Number one is to respect for all participants, whether you disagree or not. No negative personal innuendos or attacks will be tolerated. Please keep your remarks focused on specific topic issues being discussed. And please refrain from repetition of questions asked or comments made previously. So everyone has the opportunity to present different points of view and/or information. Okay, I would like to open the public hearing to consider two citizens petitions for the November. Okay, I would like to open the public hearing to consider two citizens petitions for the November town meeting as follows. In accordance with Mass General Law's chapter 40A section fine, the planning board will hold a public hearing on the following proposed citizen petitions for the following proposed amendments to the Manchester by the sea zoning bylaw. Article hasn't been numbered yet to see if the town will vote to amend article 6.11.4. Development scheduling rate of deployment of the zoning bylaws by rewording as follows. The building inspector shall issue building permits for construction of new residential structures only if any, if in any consecutive 12 month period, such permit issues will not result in either a total of more than 50 new dwelling units or authorizing connection to the municipal sewage facility of a total of more than 50 dwelling units. This bylaw shall become effective as the date of its enactment and remain in effect until repealed by future town meetings. And the second petition, to see if the town will vote or amend article 6.13.5 residential con- conservation clusters, standards and dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws by adding a new subsection 6.13.5 as follows. Safe access, notwithstanding any provision, any housing development with an access greater than 500 feet in length and which is greater than 50 dwelling units, A must pave such access road and B must provide a paved secondary access road. Each of these access roads should be of adequate width, grade and construction for vehi- vehicular traffic and shall be opened and properly maintained at all times for in ingress and egress. Text of the proposed bylaw amendments is available for inspection and review during enormous normal business hours at the office of the town clerk, town hall and on the Manchester by the sea website. The links for the town website and Zoom meetings were listed in the legal notice. These articles were advertised in the cricket on October 1st and October 8th were mailed on Tuesday, September 28th to abutting towns and agencies posted in town hall on the web on September 28th and a copy was given to the assessors. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for, to Bill Cross for a brief overview. Now I'm going to open the public hearing for both of these articles. And then I will uh, speak to them individually at the end with board comments. They'll have board comments on each one. Hey, uh, Mr. Cross, are you going to be speaking for the applicant on this?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before you start, uh, this is Rob, Robenstein from KP Law, we're town council.
Yes, Robin.
Just for the sake of, of the public, I think it would be helpful on for you if you could ask the board members who don't have their cameras on, unless they have a technical issue, if they could please turn those on.
We've, would, would the board members without their cameras on, please turn them on.
Thank you.
So I'm going to be present throughout this hearing. But I think that Jay Bothwick is really going to be the best person to lead the discussion of these two motions. And one of the two um, motions is quite significantly revised from the article that you uh, just read, Ron. And um, and we've sent that to the planning board, the current um, motion. And I'm happy to, to do a share screen if that's helpful. But um, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows that the article as printed that relates to the pace of development is quite different from the motion as reviewed um, and revised. And KP Law has, has reviewed that as well as Alan Wilson. And the changes to that motion are, are within the scope of the article. Did you get the email with the revised language?
We did, Ron, I can share my screen if you want.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Great. Um, and with that, why don't I turn it over to Jay?
Okay, thank you. Um, Jay Bothick, Boardman Ave. First, I think we want to express our appreciation of planning board for considering these warrant articles. And also we appreciate the fact that you had provided some questions in advance. As Bill noted, I think it's important to see the proposed revision to the article limiting the number of permits or sewer connections in the 12 month period. Importantly, it now has, uh, as, as proposed, uh, in the, would be to propose it in the motion. It has a essentially a, a two-year sunset provision and outlines a more specific rationale related to analyzing the town's sewer and water resources during this two-year period. Demand unlimited town resources was always the driver behind this article and the new language certainly sharpens that, that focus. The other article um, that you had reviewed relates to ax- relating to access is based on public safety concerns. We don't plan to spend more time describing the articles, but I thought was to launch right into responding uh, to the questions that were presented. And of course, we're happy to respond to any other questions that may come up along the way as well. I think uh, first with respect to the article, um, seeking two means of access. There was a request uh, to provide zoning bylaws or examples of zoning bylaws in other towns that have similar provisions of two access points. And noting that the letter that we had supplied from a traffic consultant had referred to subdivision regulations, uh, and that the Manchester subdivision regs have a similar um, regulation limiting the length of roads in section 8.3.7 for subdivisions. We don't have examples of zoning bylaws versus subdivision regulations in other communities. Uh, we are aware of the subdivision regulations in Manchester. Um, and in relevant part, they say dead end streets, including cul-de-sacs shall not exceed 500 feet in length as measured to the back of the cul-de-sac property line unless a greater length is deemed desirable by the board because of topography or other local conditions. Our belief in proposing this article is that at some level of density and length, potential safety considerations that could result from limited access over the single access point should outweigh other considerations and that such development should be precluded and not left to judgment. That said, we are certainly open uh, to including the cap and subdivision regulations versus zoning regulations, although we believe that it should apply to any new residential development and not just those in subdivisions as the safety issues are the same in each case. The next question asked why specific threshold of that applicability, 50 dwelling units, residential only and 500 feet. Um, I'm going to take those somewhat out of order. 500 feet was in large part used because of the existing subdivision regulations in Manchester and other communities that were pointed out in the report that was shared. Um, and we felt there seemed to be consensus about uh, single point access roads of that length uh, or greater deserving special attention. Beals Associates and Bayside Engineering, uh, two knowledgeable firms that we consulted with and Bayside was the report we shared, um, also supported that 500 foot length. In terms of the number of units, um, you know, 50 units seemed like a reasonable number. To our knowledge, there are only two areas in Manchester currently that have more than 50 residential units served by a single access road. One would be Old Essex Road and the other would be Smith Point. Walker Road has some, just something shy of 50 units beyond Parsons Lane based upon a review of the GIS mapping system and doesn't appear to have room for anymore. We're not advocating precluding additional development in those areas. But with the exception of the additional units um, proposed in the um, uh, housing vision by the, put forth by the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust and the Manchester Housing Authority, which we support. We're not aware of any new development potential that would significantly increase the net new number of units in either of those two areas. In any event, um, again, we would be open to discussing ways to permit such new development. For instance, if by, you know, providing an exception to any existing condition that does not increase the overall number of units by more than a set percentage, that would might be one sort of resolution. Um, and we're also open to discussing increases in either the number of units or the length of the road. If the consensus was that somewhat different numbers would achieve the same basic goal uh, and not create unanticipated consequences. Third, our focus on housing development reflects greater concern with the 24 by seven presence of people as compared to a commercial enterprise with presence more limited in duration. And thus the greater public safety risk. While we're on the subject, even though it's this other article, our focus on residential units on the moratorium is driven by the greater demand on town services, water, sewer, schools, as well as the 24 by seven demand on public safety. Again, that said, we're willing to discuss the applicability to other kinds of development if that would be deemed more appropriate. The next question uh, that was posed was whether this limitation would be cumulative, that is, if there were 30 units existing and 22 were added, does the access provision apply? And again, we think it should, um, aside from existing conditions noted above. Our hope is that the town would not permit additional areas to exceed the 50, 500 cap or whatever numbers are deemed appropriate. But, but again, we're in favor of additional development of planes and providing an exception along the lines that I suggested before, we think could address any concerns. Um, and we are willing to discuss different views or if we're overlooking unanticipated consequences, other ways to address those. The next question, um, why should public ac- private access ways be treated any differently than public roads? If you mean should private access roads be subject to the same 50, 500 limits, whatever, or whatever, we agree. Um, and if our proposed language seems to limit it to public ways, we are certainly open to modifications to make it apply to private ways. If you are saying do both access points have to be public roads, that's not our intent. Um, as long as emergency vehicles would have viable access over private ways, we do not intend to mandate um, that they be um, uh, they meet the zoning of subdivision requirements for public roads. We defer to public safety officials, police and fire and others like the planning board as to what cons- what would constitute adequate access. You know, candidly, we're not trying to mandate 128 type access. Just the place to get fire apparatus through if the other access point is blocked by construction, a delivery vehicle, an accident or vehicles closely parked on both sides of the road. The next question, there are many existing dead end roads in Manchester that are much longer than 500 feet, some serving more than 50 dwelling units. As I mentioned earlier, we, we think there, we're only aware of two such instances, one being Old Essex Road and the other Smith Point. Another question was whether we're aware of any safety issues with any of these streets. And here I'm going to ask um, Denny Hall um, to, to uh, to uh, respond to this point.
Denny? Yeah, I'm, I'm getting there. Um, thank you, Jay. I'm a little technologically challenged, you have to bear with me. Yeah, I, I, Denny Hall, I live on 20 Masconoma Street. You know, I think there was an instance a few years ago in University Lane where uh, the fire apparatus couldn't get up the hill. But that was probably more pertaining to ice and, and snow than anything else. I will tell you that on where I live, on Masconoma Street, which is a little across from the church. It is not unusual that uh, you will have occasional uh, construction vehicles, particularly tractor trailers, who uh, much to their chagrin, find out they can't make the turn up towards Lobster Cove and literally have to back down uh, all the way on Masconoma Street or Proctor Street in order to uh, escape the, the fact that they can't make a, a full turn. And when that takes place, or even when there are construction vehicles along uh, Masconoma or Proctor Street, you know, you, you can't get by on that street. And if, if you can't, if you can't go the other way, um, then you really do have a bottleneck. And I think that uh, is a safety issue. If somebody, uh, police or fire had, had, were blocked uh, one way and, or, or if the, if the construction vehicle was blocking access to uh, somebody, somebody's house uh, down the road from that blockage, I think you'd have a significant issue. At least with regard to uh, prop uh, delivery of service. So um, you know, when we have, and, and obviously it seems like we've got construction going on one way, one place or another all the time. And uh, when you see a tractor trailer with a, with a uh, bulldozer on the, on the back, you, you hope that they know they can't make it the whole way because they're going to have to back down literally the entire length of the street.
Yeah, and, and I, I guess I would just say it, I, you know, we, we, we can't point to specific examples uh, where, as, as Denny said, other, aside from the university lane, but really believe that the point we're, we're trying to put forward is that the common sense is that safety would be enhanced and, and just because it hasn't happened in the past, doesn't mean it wouldn't happen in the future or couldn't happen in the future. I'd also point out that at least my understanding is that the public safety policy in Manchester dictates that they never want the train gates on Beach Street and Sea Street both to be in the down position at the same time. So that access to that town, that part of town is always maintained. And again, we just think that's a similar example of public safety awareness, uh, similar to what we're, we're talking about here. Rather than based on specific past events.
Jay, if I could just chime in here, uh, Bill Cross, Smith Point. As a, a neighbor of Penny's and a resident of one of the two neighborhoods that Jay has alluded to, I, I will say that uh, Smith Point has uh, the benefit of uh, either Masconoma or uh, Proctor Streets. There's a relatively small part of Masconoma Street that is, um, that is truly a potential bottleneck. And I can't tell you the number of times over the years that we've lived in our house where we've needed to go down Proctor Street rather than Masconoma Street because Masconoma Street is blocked. We're very grateful that there is a second access road that serves our neighborhood. Because of the frequency with which we have issues of the kind that Denny was just alluding to. Public safety means different things to different people. When I use the term public safety, it's a common sense term. Where I know that I need to get to an appointment. And somehow I got to back out. It may not be a heart attack or some critical health issue. But I know that I somehow need to backtrack and find another way out. And I'm grateful that um, in my daily life, I've got that. That's what uh, I would define as a, a public safety benefit of having a secondary access road.
The, the last question um, on this, on this proposed article was uh, to the effect that a secondary paved access road would increase impervious surface and land disturbance, creating a larger development footprint and ecological impact. Why make this a requirement? I, you know, I, I, that, those are fair points, but I, I would just say that we could similarly, I think similarly ask why there are requirements under the subdivision regulations for a traveled way, uh, road plus sidewalk widths that increase the length and. for a traveled way, road plus sidewalk widths, that increase the length and unit served. We assume that public safety and access needs outweigh the potential negatives of greater impervious surfaces and and land disturbance in that case. And we don't really see the underlying public safety and balancing of risks and potential impacts in our cases being, you know, that much different. We're just trying to say at some point, the need for a second access should be clear, not just the subjective determination. And if frankly, if the ability to use a pervious surface for the secondary road was deemed important, we'd be open to that as long as it's reasonably passable. That's what we're trying to achieve, is to have a reasonably accessible fire, police, and other, you know, public safety access. Those were the, those were the points in the first article. Mr. Chairman, I'd I'd be happy to move on to the second one, or I'd be happy if there, if you want to have conversation on on that particular article before we move on to the other one.
Yeah, I think, as this is one public hearing, I'd like to discuss them individually. So if if you're done with your your talk, I would ask the board if they have any comments on the proposed article.
Ron?
Yes, Mr. Gilbert.
Which, we're talking about the
The safe, the the five hundred? The second access road.
The, so this, I have a few comments about this one, on a first on a policy level and secondly, on a legal level. This this law, the way it's written, is triggered only by a residential conservation cluster, at least the copy of the law I have. Application, it's not triggered by a subdivision application or an overlay district or a forty B development. The whole idea of the residential conservation cluster is to encourage somebody to develop land a little bit more densely with their buildings and provide the town with more open space. On a policy level, why would we discourage somebody from from doing that by by putting this kind of limitation on it? The, and tying the hands of the planning board to with a five hundred foot limit doesn't allow us the flexibility to negotiate a variety of issues. We might be avoiding someone cutting down a hillside in order to have a shorter road, for example. On a legal level, it it says in there, notwithstanding any other provision, but of what? Of this bylaw, of all the bylaws? There's a lack of clarity there. It refers to, well, there's some English that needs to be corrected, where it refers to an access road greater than five hundred feet, which is greater than fifty dwelling units. That just doesn't read well, at least in the copy that I've got. And it says the access road shall be, shall have adequate width, grade, et cetera, et cetera. But adequate is a very, very imprecise term. Sam's idea of adequate and Sally's idea of adequate could be very, very different. Why not just refer to the subdivision rules and regulations where it's very, very clear how you build roads? The way I see it, this this law sort of ties our hands, so we can't ask for the kind of things we've actually discussed on long, common driveways in the past or subdivisions in town, such as we could require pullouts every two hundred feet. We could require wider easements so that somebody could potentially drive around two vehicles stuck in a road. Mind you, the roads that would be built under the current laws, they couldn't be as narrow as Mascanoma or as or as University Lane. They'd be very, very different roads, which with much greater width. It wouldn't allow us to ask for more water mains or or bigger water piping to to service the residences that we're talking about here, or for more catch patients to keep ice and water off the roadway. So I see those as the effects, and I I really feel that having written some bylaws in the past and and gone through the machinery of the town to have them reviewed, I think we would have had a better product here if this was done in a more collaborative effort. We have people like our town moderator to review laws before they get brought to town meeting and be voted on. And our town administrator has pretty darn good knowledge on bylaws as well as our town council. And I I think that there's an opportunity here for this kind of laws, which will have very little effect in the near term, could become part of our bylaw revision discussions and then get the proper proper discussions and proper vetting, just like all the other bylaw revisions that we've been working two years on. Thanks.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any other board comments? Questions? Laura?
Thank you, Ron. Thanks for the presentation and the opportunity for us to talk this through. I appreciate you, Jay and Bill bringing this forward. I I am concerned about the ecological impacts, and I think that it is a maybe an unintended consequence, but a false choice to say that it's either public safety or ecological impacts or, you know, harm to the environment. Because I think while there are many cases where it is appropriate to have a second means of egress, if you're, you know, building a gridded neighborhood that connects to other, to a to a network of streets, then it makes a lot of sense, but there are times when it doesn't make as much sense to have a second means of egress. The roads that you point to that are narrow are, you know, they're historic roads. They would not be built to those standards today. They'd be built to different standards that would require safe passage for emergency vehicles. And I just think, I I tend to agree with Gary here that it's actually limiting the purview of the planning board to make decisions when we may feel that what we're trying to do is preserve undeveloped land to minimize, you know, the footprint of the development, not just the pervious or impervious cer- surface, although that's certainly important, but, you know, minimize the grading, minimize the tree clearing and so forth. And so to require a secondary road in a kind of arbitrary way like that, I I just fear brings some unintended consequences, which may not benefit to the to the town.
Thank you, Laura. Any other board comments? Sarah?
I just wanted to reiterate Gary's first point, which is this is an amendment to section sixteen point thirteen point five, adding another subsection. So its applicability is extremely narrow. It's only for for residential clusters. So if, for example, SLV were a a proposal and was subject to zoning, which it's not, I, as I read this, it's not a residential cluster, so it, this 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 bylaw amendment would not apply, because it's not a residential cluster. That said, residential clusters, to Laura's point, the whole purpose of section of that section sixteen point thirteen point five is largely to reduce requirements in order to encourage lower density, develop, lower footprint, less frontage requirements and and additional open space. And so I think that the that this provision, adding this provision is is kind of in conflict with the goals of the residential cluster and is an un- almost, I can almost not even see when it would be applicable, because we're not likely to have fifty dwelling units in a residential cluster, given the nature of our available land.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments from the board? Okay, I will now open up comments from the public. And public comments.
If 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 I might, just in terms of the 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 numbering, and and perhaps this is underscoring some of the the confusion with the existing zoning bylaws, candidly, we struggled where to put this. And ended up, you know, sort of in default, putting it into the proposing to put it into the the residential cluster place, because it seemed to be the best home, because we didn't really see another spot for it. So, again, that that maybe that's our our inability to parse through all of the zoning bylaws and figure out a better place for it, but that certainly was was not the intent.
Jay, what's the urgency? Can I ask a question? What's the urgency with this that in for fall town meeting? Is there a urgency that for these two petitions?
Well, I'm sorry, that was someone else, someone on the board was. I I think, Ron, as you know, we we did propose it. I think we we'd like, at at the last town meeting, we sort of took it back. I I think at the end, I'm happy to, I'm happy to sort of talk about timing overall, and and maybe if you would permit me to sort of circle back on that point, just in terms of overall timing, at the, after we talk about the other one, I I I would prefer to to do it in that fashion, sort of talk about both of them in that context.
Thanks.
If I could just, if I could just add to what Jay just said, we certainly did construct this with exactly the kind of collaborative work that Gary referred to. And the structure of this guided by all the people that Gary was referring to. So we're we're grateful for that collaboration. You may recall that I I did try in June to introduce this at the at the planning board level as well, and it it didn't appear that any further discussion was was really going to be constructive or in line with the the guidance for how to submit articles to the town meeting. So we've we've done our best, and please, I'll take all the blame for any and any criticism that we've failed to reach out to more people. We've we've done our darnedest to talk to everybody under the sun.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Ron, this is Sue.
Sue?
Could I pose a question, and perhaps this goes to town council? It appears to me that if you're looking to prevent more than a certain number of dwelling units on a particular road, let's take, for example, Walker Road, which is another one of the roads that is very long, single access with many, many houses on it. Would it not be a taking if you said, because there are forty-nine houses and the next, and a person owns a piece of property that could be rightly developed, say, by a subdivision or other means, is it not a taking if you prevent that person from developing that property? I I guess that's a question to town council.
I I wish I could give you a bit of a more helpful answer, because it's it's kind of a hypothetical. I mean, zoning often has the effect of preventing a property from being developed, and that is not a taking. So, I mean, we'd have to look at exactly what the circumstances would be. There are such things as regulatory takings, but on the other hand, there's also reasonable regulation and all sorts that limits or prevents, you know, property use, that is not a taking. So have to look at specifically the language in order to be able to say so. Sorry, can't be more more helpful with an answer, but it's something we would have to see specifically to be able to comment on.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments on this one, I, oh, sorry, Becky.
Hi, Becky Jakes, twenty-two Forster Road. I'm curious as to why this is being brought forward in a way that circumvents the normal process and having a a bylaw amendment thoroughly vetted prior to bringing it to town meeting. It's it's confusing to me why this would be done in this manner. Thank you.
Bill or Jay, you want to comment on that?
I I'm I'm not sure I I quite understand, but I, my understanding was that amendments or bylaw amendments like this had to come to the planning board first, or that was the, that was the appropriate way for these kinds of amendments to proceed. And that was the the path that we that we chose to go first to the planning board and then and then to the town meeting. But Becky, I may I may not have understood your question.
I I may not have either. We've followed the instructions of Alan Wilson as as moderator and the law as spelled out. I think that Ron referred earlier to the specific chapter. This is coming to the planning board after a process of of ten months of consideration involving a range of engineers and attorneys outside the town, as well as a large number of people inside the town. So far from circumventing anything, we've worked really hard for really long to engage with as many people as possible in coming up with the best language and putting it in the best possible place. I I don't know what else I can say.
If I may, Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So you're before the planning board right now, and town meeting is in two weeks. How does that provide enough time to properly vet this through the planning board? When you have only so, you you don't have time for another meeting prior to town meeting. And that's what I mean in terms of a process being properly vetted in the normal process. And so it does seem a circuitous route when there's two weeks before town meeting.
That's that's correct. We submitted this in the summer. It's time to process it through the selectmen and then through the planning board. We only learned a couple of weeks before the annual town meeting that we had been given bad advice, posing it through the general bylaw and that it needed to be done through the zoning bylaw. And literally the day after that annual town meeting, we began the process to do it through the zoning bylaw process. So the the ten months included all the months leading up to the annual town meeting and then all the months since. I'm sorry, I've just done the best I can, and so have all of my colleagues and many, many, many people outside the town as well, lawyers and engineers. This has been an extraordinary
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have one last question.
Yeah, go ahead, Becky.
Okay, and it's just you say many, 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 many people outside of town. But you say you did work with committees within the town, so you collaborated all along the way with the Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust and the planning board to make sure these were applicable and 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 had, did not have unintended consequences within the town. Because I I don't recall that.
Okay, I have thought of the of this as a planning matter addressing public safety. And we've done a lot of discussion with a lot of people. I don't, we have not talked to the Housing Authority, which not thought of as being a a a public safety entity, but perhaps it is, and and we just live in ignorance.
Well, Bill, we did, we did, we did speak to the joint meeting of the Housing Authority and the and the Affordable Housing Trust in, I think, the end of June, and we talked about these articles at at a at a joint meeting.
Thanks, Jay. Okay, I have three hands raised. Greg, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Ron. So just a couple of comments. One, that there are two basic processes by which amendments can come before the town. One is through initiation by the planning board directly, which I think is what people are referring to as the normal process. But state law also does allow for a petition process. And that's what this is. This is an alternative to what I guess people call the normal process, but but it is legitimately before the voters, and it is before you to, as a planning board now, to to opine as to whether or not you feel it warrants voter support. So while it may not have gone through what we're calling the normal process, which again refers to going through the planning board, various, you know, subcommittee meetings perhaps and, and vetting process that you're more used to, th- this is a legal process. And it's up to, up to the board to opine and ultimately up to the voters to, to make that decision. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it is a process that perhaps is, is different than what has normally happened in the town, but it is a legitimate process.
Thanks Greg.
Ron, if I could.
Chris.
Ron.
Go ahead Alan, Alan.
Yeah, thanks. I, I just want to second what Greg said and, and amplify a bit on Bill's comment that he, they, the petitioners consulted with me. I advised them on the process to initiate a citizen's petition to amend the zoning bylaw. I do that all the time with petitioners who aren't familiar with the legal process and with the town meeting process. And I want to go maybe one step further than Greg did, which is to say, not only is this a legitimate sanctioned part of the process under chapter forty-eight, it's an important part of the process that citizens can initiate changes to the zoning bylaw that they think are important. And it's, it's part of the, the freedom that we have, not only under the zoning enabling act, but under the town meeting process.
Thank you, Alan. Christina.
Thank you. Sorry, my sound is not great when I share my screen. So when I'm speaking, I will share my screen. So I just wanted to reiterate, thank you, Alan. That is absolutely my sentiment and as I recall, and I think it should be noted that Mr. Cross did come before the board. He looked for our advice. And in my opinion, this board was not very hospitable back and did not give him a lot of direction and sent him on his way. So to say not the regular normal process, we weren't, we weren't open to that process. So that's what I have to say. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Sarah.
I'm, I'm going to just reiterate what I said earlier in the meeting on a different topic, which is I think we have to assume that everybody's working in good faith here. The minutes of June twenty-eighth do reflect that Mr. Cross came and we raised some of these very same questions that we sent to the petitioners prior to this meeting and that Jay has gone through. And the minutes reflect that the board was, was sort of skeptical, like, I don't know, about the, about the need for this bylaw. So I think that it did come before us. We kind of had the sense that it, it wasn't something that we were very much in favor with, in favor of. So I think that's both true. Nonetheless, let's talk about the merits of the bylaw. When this came in June, the proposal was to amend section six point two. And it turns out that six, section six point two point eight actually has a minimum driveway length of five hundred feet for common driveways. So driveways and roads are quite different. Many of us have a driveway that's a different grade or width or surface than a road. And I think that it's, that they are very different things. We can all agree. But nonetheless, just wanted to point out that there already is a provision for common driveways that they be a maximum length, did I say minimum? Sorry, maximum length of five hundred feet in section six point two point eight. And then I guess I, I would just like to say that for my opinion is that this is not necessary for safety, understanding that there's always risk. We have, many of us live in roads with only one point of access. Many people in town live with only one point of access and that safety for an ambulance is really independent of the number of people that live there or a fire truck. Whether there's one person living at the end of a long dead end road or fifty units each with three people in them. So it's my opinion that this is, that this bylaw change, I'm not sure where it belongs. That's part of what we're trying to do is in the recodification, it's get a little more order to the bylaw. I don't think it belongs in sixteen point three point five. And I also, it's my opinion that it is not necessary for safety.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Any further comments on the standards and development requirements? Otherwise I would, oh, sorry, Chief, Chief Cleary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I've listened to all the discussion tonight and I've read through some of the documentation. And I, I know that one of the major premises behind this is public safety. However, in that respect, I'm not raising a bell of alarm. I don't see Chief Fitzgerald here raising a bell of alarm. There are many things covered under the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Code that helps ascertain and helps require many of the safeguards to be put in place with respect to new developments, roadway widths. It, it's very straightforward. A lot of it came out in the forty B projections and discussions as well. So to try and limit this and then take away the ability to judge each project on its merits, to see where it's located, to see what the grade is, to see the number of people, the type of construction. If we would move forward and consider sprinklers, that allows a, a, a ton of leeway with road widths and road lengths. Some of these, the codes would require fire alarm systems or potentially sprinklers, more hydrants. Those all things enhance public safety. There are many roads and driveways in town that if they were built today would not, would not meet the current fire code. But if we're talking new developments, there's a lot of safeguards already in place. And I think what happens if you try to add too many safeguards, they're going to start to be in competition or in conflict with one another, and that's going to create additional issues. I do not have a problem where the fire code allows the authority having jurisdiction, which is myself, to make these determinations about safety with respect to what road widths or how many roads are required for these various things above and beyond what's already been written and what's already in the zoning bylaws. And I don't recall unless my memory is really failing that I've had any extensive discussions with anybody who is proposing this with respect to how many times these things happen. There's always the what ifs. Many of the roads in town, if a single tree came down, would be blocked. So the, the, the whole what if, what if a car accident, what if snow, what if this? We can play that game all day and you're always going to find the exceptions to the rule. In the year and a half I've been here, even in some of the neighborhoods, we have run extensive numbers of calls. I have never not been able to get to a call that I've needed to, nor has the ambulance or the fire truck in, in my brief tenure here. And anecdotally, we're aware of some of the more difficult access roads and driveways in town and we plan accordingly for them. So based on my opinion, I think this is just going to muddy the water and make the job that everybody has already more difficult. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Cleary. Chris Alman.
Well, I couldn't have said that better, Chief, if I, if I could have myself. I, I think what's happening here is a, a solution looking for a problem. And I don't think the problem actually exists. And, and I think it's probably well intended to protect public safety. And yet we don't have the, either the fire chief or the police chief telling us that that would, this is going to help in any way. So I, I, I think maybe there is room for a collaboration going forward to try to see if we can work together to make some changes to the zoning bylaw. You know, we've been doing this for two years, working on recodification and taking up these, these issues. I haven't seen Bill or Jay or any, or Denny at any of our recodification meetings where we could really have this kind of discussion and, and vet out some of the, of the language and some of the concerns. So maybe, maybe this should, maybe we should take the winter to see if we can find common ground and make corrections to our zoning bylaw that might address some of the concerns that, that the group is raising.
Thanks, Chris. Well said. Okay, any, I don't see any of the hands up. I would like to move on to the development, rate of development proposed petition. If that's okay, if no one else wants to go on that, we'll move on to the rate of development. Jay.
Okay, thank you. So the, the first question was, was a, pointing out that the, that an understanding that a bylaw that limits growths without a specific reason will not be approved by the Attorney General. And is the reason based on resource protection or intended to address, address growth? Are there specific resource limitations that are quantifiable? Again, I, I, I think as Bill noted, w- we have a similar understanding now. And, and that's why we have suggested some modifications to the proposed article to be made in the motion at town meeting that we hope address the concerns as noted at Two Year Sunset and specifically referencing analysis of, of water and sewer needs of the town. We, we have run these by Alan Wilson and, and we believe them to be within the scope of the article and, and thus permitted. So we agree, we agree with this point and we've tried to propose language to, to address it. The next question was why fifty units? Candidly, it was somewhat arbitrary. The average net new growth of units in Manchester is something like eight. And the housing vision set forth by the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust and the, the housing authority, which I want to be very clear, we, we really support. We think it's very thoughtful. It's very sound. And, and, and we, we are very much in favor of it. That suggests development over four separate sites and a maximum of thirty units in any one site. And we expect that that would proceed over a period of several years. So we frankly thought that thirty, the fifty units accommodated both and, and was consistent with and not contrary to the housing vision. But again, we're open to discussing a different number if that were viewed as, as a, as a better solution. The next point, a rolling cap on the number of residential units may unintentionally lead to sprawl rather than clustered development. How does this cap help achieve smart growth? I, I, I don't think that a cap means that a planning board or developer is precluded from pursuing clustered development. It only means that the development would be more measured and spread out over a longer period, which we think would give the town a better ability to plan how to respond to such growth. And, and we're suggesting a cap that is over six times our current growth rates. Again, we believe new residential growth is, is probably the most taxing on town resources. Potentially involves schools, water and, and generates more wastewater than any other reasonably expected commercial development as well as public safety. And you know, perhaps in two years, the analysis will show that the town really can support this level of residential growth without significant adverse effect or impact to the continued support of existing residents, where there's some other way to address the concerns that are surfaced as a result of the analysis that are more flexible or targeted. And, and certainly as, as we propose to revise this, we have an opportunity to, to take a better and, and a harder look over that two-year period. And the, the next point was that indicating a, a sort of an FYI heads up that the planning board is proposing deleting section six eleven from zoning bylaw because its end date is unspecified and improvements to the town infrastructure have increased sewer capacity, acknowledging however that the DEP has not yet signed off on these improvements. If that deletion passes, perhaps a proposed article would take its place. Again, certainly we'd be open to that if, if that was the course that was collectively deemed to be appropriate. There were also a couple of general points. How will these articles support the development of affordable housing in Manchester? Again, I want to be very, very clear that we strongly support the development of truly affordable housing in Manchester that's decentralized, is ideally located in an area that promotes walking and bike access, not just vehicular access, and is generally consistent with the character of the town. These are all concepts that were strongly expressed by residents in the master plan process and frankly were reflected in the master plan. So again, I, I want to reiterate, we absolutely support the efforts of the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust and the MHA. And we think that the vision that they've set forth are consistent with these objectives. We're not focused on the development of affordable housing. That wasn't the intent with the, with this article, either article. And they were intended and we believe are neutral to the housing vision. And the intent is to manage growth and employ best traffic safety, best traffic engineering and safety practice, safety practices. That was the focus. The, I think the last question that was posed, how would these proposed changes affect the forty B proposal that would be approved under a comprehensive permit and not subject to the zoning regulations? They would not impact such a project. We recognize that. But we do know that they would, would apply to other types. Again, perhaps we picked the wrong section. And we'd certainly be open to figuring out collectively where best to slot these to, to make them work better. But it would not affect a, a forty B project and we recognize that. In, in, in final, and, and Ron, this is sort of circling back to your, to your point that you'd raised earlier. We've been requested by representatives of the Affordable Housing Trust to consider passing over these articles in part due to confusion over an unattributed article that some might actually even think was editorial, asserting incorrectly that these articles would kneecap the housing vision. We're also mindful of the public safety concerns relating to an indoor town meeting and that the planning board is considering significant changes to the zoning bylaws that may be proposed at the April town meeting. And for all of those reasons, we are considering the request. But frankly, we wanted to appear at this meeting. We wanted to respect the time and effort of this board that has gone into considering these articles. And we wanted to be informed by this discussion in considering that possibility. So we came forward tonight to engage in discussion. We're certainly pleased and happy to engage in further conversation as, as people want. And we will take that under advisement as we consider the request to pass over at, at this town meeting and, and push this off to the Springtown meeting. Thank you.
Oh, that's interesting. I, well, we would work, work together on that if that was the case, had more time. But anyway, be that as it may, any board comments on the fifty unit cap?
Ron?
Gary Gilbert.
I can't raise my hand electronically. Sorry, I can't find it. Again, I'd like to comment on it both on a policy level and a legal level. The town council's made it pretty clear this, this is a not a legal, legally valid law. It won't affect the SLV, so therefore time is not of the essence. I think it sends a really bad signal to somebody who wants to develop the, the, what I, I think of as the elderly housing renovation projects, the Affordable Housing Trust efforts. It's not just about affordable housing. It's about trying to get the elderly housing renovated. And it sends a signal that they, whoever that developer is might be, you know, cut off at the knees, as was said earlier, by a future citizen's petition. And most likely that develop, that developer is going to be a single developer with four different sites, four different permits. But he's, time is of the essence when it comes to development. They very likely would want to be able to come online in a given year with more than fifty units. It's quite conceivable. But they'll probably approach that project as a forty B because the current forty B will most likely be under appeal. And within less than two years, as I think a lot of people's guess, a developer will be located by the M H T who will want to go forward. And this kind of environment in town sends a bad signal as well as to anybody who might want to take advantage of what new zoning we put in place for the LCD, the Limited Commercial District. We don't know exactly what we want to see there, but housing could be part of the picture. And I think that's what this might be targeted towards, but. But that, that should be part of the discussions as we develop an overlay zone there or new zoning there. Come and join those meetings and let's talk about this. As far as um, the legal implications of it. Um, the wording co- in here copies from the existing law, which I believe is also seriously flawed. It says that the, the building inspector shall issue permits only if. So this sort of says, only if it's not the fiftieth, fifty-first housing, house to be built. The building inspector shall issue the permit. Shall is a very, very powerful word in, in the world of law. And um, they could propose a ten-story tall, single-family structure, but the building inspector shall issue the permit. So I see a problem in existing law as well as what, what they, what they're using in their law. And, and I, I also don't think this paragraph that was added to the revision is anything more than a bunch of worries and concerns and opinions. Um, about a bunch of different random subjects. Uh, it's a matter of opinion uh, about determining impact of development. We, we just did a master plan. We understand some ideas. Some things are. About impacts of development in town. We understand some things about long-term strategies. Um, it references vague defined deliverables. It's just a rambling paragraph that I don't think serves much purpose and doesn't belong in a law. Um, again, I think the way out of this is to discuss this, your concerns. And uh, let this be part of how we, how we revise our zoning in the LCD and um. Well. Defer it for now. There's no immediacy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Um, Mary, you have your hand up. Mary Foley? I'm going to use Sarah.
Mutant. Mary is muted. Mary is muted.
Yeah. Uh, we've had trouble with getting to Mary from the beginning. Um, Sarah, why don't we go to you and see if Mary comes back online?
A suggestion, perhaps Mary can write her comment in the chat and it can be read by the chair, just as a thought. Um, while you're figuring that out. Um, two things. One is that we are uh, deleting as, as the comments to petitioners indicated. We have voted that we would be deleting section six eleven. Um, and I think that this proposed, or six eleven point four, whatever it is, um. Uh, this proposed amendment at least addresses. The, one of the concerns about the existing section of the bylaw, which is that it had no um. End date. Um, so I guess this helps solve that problem. So perhaps this might at least take the place of the existing um, section. But then a comment, um, your rationale seems to be based on drinking water and sewage. I believe. But you're, but yeah, the prohibition is on dwelling units. We're um, even if they are not on municipal water or sewage. Or if they are connected to sewage, to sewage, but not necessarily water. So um, why are we? If our concern is the capacity of our wastewater and drinking water. Why would we limit those dwelling units that? Don't use either? I'm through you, the chairman.
Yeah. So if that put in his own well or his own treatment system onsite. That would pre- preclude any taxing on us municipal system. Is that kind of your question, Sarah?
My que- yeah, my question is if our, if the justification here is for those units which are. Using those town services, and if we are concerned about the capacity of those services. Um, why limit those or not taxing those?
Yeah, I, I'll try to answer that if I may. Um, I, I, I think that the, the proposed bylaw is, is an A or B. I, I think that, you know, it's fifteen year dwelling units or authorized connection to municipal sewage treatment. So I, 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 I think certainly the, this, the connection part is, is tied to, to the sewage. Um, I, I guess you've posed a hypothetical. Um, I'm, I'm not aware, not aware that that many. Um, people are, are building um, uh, homes. Or that many new dwelling units that are relying on wells. Um, but if, if, if there was some desire to exclude um, folks. Um, from the scope of this that were, that were not relying on the town resources. I mean, I think, I think there are other resources that are, that are affected here. Um, as I said, public safety, schools and other kinds of resources would be stretched as well. Um, but we were particularly focused on, on water and sewer. Um, we could, we could certainly consider exempting them if that in fact is believed to be a, a significant issue.
Uh, may I just add to Jay's comment? Um.
Yes.
Good one, but it's really above my pay grade. Um, we, we have a Water Resources Protection Committee that has been tasked with specific work. Um, to assess in a strategic way, the water and wastewater issues. Uh, for the town and what we're trying through this motion. Um, as revised in the form that we sent you. Is to provide room for those people with expertise. Uh, as I say, above, above my pay grade to do their work.
Thank you, Bill. See here, I see Laura and Chris, and Mary still has a mute issue.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead if Mary's not ready yet. Um, so regarding the, the. This, this article is saying you, you're, you're not precluding the use of cluster development. And only suggesting that the development would be more measured and spread out over a longer period. But I see some, again, some unintended consequences with that. So if we're, if we're trying for cluster development in town, which I think is really, you know, those are the developments that are going to bring more diversity of housing. And housing types, the smaller units. This doesn't do anything to prevent the one at a time, two acre, you know, large, large lot development, residential development. That is going to just creep along at the same rate. What this really is going to prevent is those more dense. Again, in the appropriate locations, but more dense cluster development. Which any developer is not going to invest in all of the infrastructure that has to be put in right at the beginning of the development. So the roads, the sewers, the, you know, the water, all the infrastructure that's required. They're just not going to put that at risk of only being able to develop a certain number here and the next year maybe a certain more. You need, you need the capacity there if we want to get smart growth and transit oriented development. That does allow walking and biking and all the good things that I know, I know we're trying to do. And I, I really just want to be very careful that anything we do doesn't unintentionally um. Smack of exclusionary policy. You know, I think we're all really interested in, in developing affordable housing and affordable. Uh, housing of different unit sizes and, and serving different populations. And my concern is that this article is unintentionally, again, hampering our ability to do smart growth development.
Laura, uh, Chris?
Uh, so I'm going to raise another hypothetical. Um, let's say a forty B does come into town and it has fifty units, sixty units. It's not going to, uh, doesn't have to comply with this bylaw because it's, it's a forty B. But as a result of that, no one else is going to be able to build a house for a year. Because somebody's building sixty units or fifty units. And even if it's not a forty B, and there's some carve out, what if there's a really great development that has forty-eight units? And in the downtown, everybody loves like twelve Summer Street or something. What happens to the rest of the town? No one can build a house for, maybe three people could build, build a house. The rest of us are shut out. I think that's an unintended consequence of this kind of strict limit. I think we're all for measured growth, but growth doesn't happen in fifty unit increments or twenty unit increments. It happens as time goes by with economic and, and uh, social factors that come into play. Some years we get a lot of development, some we may go for five years without any, who knows? But to try to, to force fit a, a limit like this on town growth, I think does us all a disservice. And again, I think we can all work together and come up with a way of metering out development in a way that. Can accommodate the way towns really do develop and not just force it down our throats.
Thank you, Chris. Um. Uh, Sarah?
Um, just to re- uh, build on what Chris just said. And also follow up on what Bill Cross said. I think none of us are opposed to the Water Resources Protection Committee doing their work. As, as charged, so let's not um, in any way infer that these comments are. Not in support of that important work.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, okay, any more comments from the board? I'll take any comments from the public on this matter.
Can I just, this is Robin Stein again. Can I just?
Yes, Robin.
Can I just suggest you check with Mary and make sure she's still with us?
Mary's having a lot of trouble. Um, Ron, can you try and physically unmute her?
See, I can't find her. Let me see. I don't see her.
He can hear, but she's speaking, but no one can hear her.
I can't even find her name right now.
So she tried to call on her phone, but she can't unmute. So I didn't know if you could physically unmute her.
I can ask, let me see. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes. With an echo.
Oh, can, can you hear me, Ron?
Yes, go ahead, Mary.
Ron?
Mary, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Mary, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you. I don't know if you can hear us.
Ron, you've also disabled the chat, so we can't let Mary know that you, that she can be heard. Oh, someone just got it in. I guess maybe it's, I'm disabled. Maybe, maybe you can. Thank you, Sarah, for doing that.
I hear like a beeping.
I think that's Mary probably trying to type, trying to call in.
Sounds like a bird or something.
I think it's an old fashioned land phone.
Well, while Mary's trying to join us, are there any other board comments? Otherwise I'll move to Mary and then to the public. Technology. When will this be over and we'll meet in town hall?
It's due by the end of next week, Ron. They installed, they started installing it today.
Wow, okay. Encouraging. We'll be back together. The band will be back in town.
So can you hear us and we can hear Mary now?
Mary still has a mute, uh, mic. I am, uh, I don't know what the, um. Mary, you want to drive over here?
Uh, Ron, can I ask a question?
Gary?
Um, in, in uh, the presentation that was made to the Affordable Housing Trust. It talks about avoiding or minimizing the uh, impact on uh, demands on our resources. I don't really see how staggering development over a course of two years versus one year really achieves much at all. Um, the, we, we, we've done a study in FAQ on our water and sewer that hasn't been published yet as far as I know. But um, we have a lot of capacity, should we choose to use it. But if you use it over the course of two years, I mean, maybe I'm getting older, but two years goes by pretty quick. Um, how is two years to get the development in versus one year much of a help to anybody really? We're not going to change what we're doing in town or somehow water doesn't appear. Um, or what have you. I mean, we decrease our infiltration and, and all, uh, which we're constantly working on. But I don't really see how it accomplishes much.
Any comments from, yeah?
I, I guess I would respond to that as the bylaw that, in the motion that's proposed is the two-year moratorium. And so I think the, you know, the short answer is that we'd have a two-year period to figure out. Whether this is something that should be in place or what might be in place over the longer term. Um, and so I, I, I think that's a better way to proceed.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, Mary, looks like you can speak. Can I, looks like you're unmuted?
Can you hear me, Ron?
Yes, can you hear us?
Um. Well, I have you on my landline, but I'm talking through my iPad.
All right, well.
So it's an echo, so hopefully you're not hearing the echo.
No, we hear you clear right now.
Okay, um, geez, I kind of forget what I wanted to say. But it was um, having to do with the rate of development. Um, and I just wanted to thank Jay and Bill and Denny for presenting. It's, it's, I thought it was well thought out. I think we do have water and sewer issues that something like this could address. Um, you know, I'm open if we need to do any tweaking, but I think it's, it's going down the right path. And I, I won't say much more just because I'm getting an awful echo.
Okay, well, you sounded fine. Thank you for your comments. And now, uh, if there are no other board comments, I'll entertain any comments from the public. Or Robin, did you have something that you wanted to say or?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure Mary was able to hear everything, so she'd be able to.
Okay.
Just was checking on, but it sounds like she's been listening.
Ron, can I pose a question?
Yes, Sue.
I am going to throw it back to Robin, um, if, if I may. The um, cap, the limiting um, development through the cap. They talk about it primarily being a concern for water and sewer. But in the um, tag along verbiage that was, is added, it also talked about. Um, trying to control development so that you could, um, so that wouldn't have an undue impact on town services. And I'm wondering if Robin can provide the, maybe a little bit of case law history. That talks about the legality or the illegality of um, of trying to stop development. Um, simply because of its impact on a town's budget or town services such as schools.
Well, I didn't. And I'm just looking at the, the language again, um, because I don't, I don't see that in the language. I see the language that says the bylaws intended to determine the impact. Um, you know, certainly the, the purpose of a moratorium or rated development bylaws, not, you're not trying to stop development. You're just trying to get a handle on things so that you can study it, um, and deal with it. So I'm not sure which language um, you're referring to, Sue.
So I was referring to the language that it said, and, and I don't have it in front of me either. But in Jay's comments, he said he wanted to be able to control development so we could control impacts on schools and town services.
I mean, I, I don't think that you can, you can just, um, you know, limit development long-term to control those impacts. I think that you can have a, a limited in time rate of development limitation. That gives you the opportunity to study, you know, what are actually present identifiable issues. Um, but the bylaw, it says the bylaw is intended to allow the town to determine. Um, the higher impacts of development. So at least the language I saw was phrased in terms of studying or, or evaluating the issue. Um, you know, I don't think that you can just pass a moratorium to stop development. Um, and, and anything that's passed needs to be rationally related to legitimate zoning purposes. So, you know, legitimate zoning purposes to plan for or to, you know, you know, address present issues. That you need some time to get a handle on. I hope that's helpful. I didn't, I didn't read it that way.
Yeah, no, no, it's perfect. It isn't written into the, it isn't written into the article. It was um, it was part of the um presentation that talked about impacts to schools and town budgets and town, other town services. So I just wanted to be clear that that's not a, that's not something that's allowed based on what I understand to be, um, unless you're building a new school or something. But it's not something that you can limit development on.
And and again, I don't see those additional items identified as cases for this moratorium in any.
Thank you, yep.
Uh, Ron, may I uh just uh to what Robin just said?
Yes, Mr. Cross.
Um, so Michelle Rendazzo, a colleague of Robin's, who is uh Town Council, uh reviewed this motion um and affirmed that it's completely legal and appropriate. Um, and it's, it's written, as I said, in a way which is uh very much uh constructed to take into account the current um work being done through the Water Resources Protection Committee uh to take a strategic look at water and wastewater uh issues for the town. And we we've just done our best to be thoughtful and collaborative in all of our work, including with Town Council. Um, and uh we're grateful for all of the people that have participated in coming up with the best possible motion. Um, and I just want to thank um KP Law and uh and others who have participated in this. Thank you very much.
If I could just, not to sound too lawyerly, um, but obviously we can never predict this were challenged, you know, what the outcome may be, um, you know, i- in a court of law or or what have you. So obviously, we can review things, but we can't guarantee um, you know, outcomes in the future.
Thank you, Robin. Um, any other comments from the public? Okay, um, so Jay, you talked about circling back at the end. You've heard comments from the board. I think I'm going to get ready to close the public hearing. We talked about having more time to vet this, uh maybe properly for for a spring town meeting. Before I take it back to the board, any movement on your part for possibly um changing uh passing over on this? Or we want to move forward on this with Fall Town Meeting?
Yeah, I uh I'll, Ron, I think that's addressed to me. I think it's something that we are going to as a, as a group. Um, you know, Bill and Denny and I are here, but there are other folks on the frankly, on the Seema Board that it it's a board decision. We have, we are going to schedule a meeting soon. And we we, again, we wanted to get this input. We wanted to have this dialogue. And so I'm not prepared to say yay or nay here, but it's certainly something that we've been asked to do and something that we scheduled the meeting to discuss. Um, and we appreciate the input and the and the back and forth. And and we hope to have that meeting as soon as we can and then and then let you know what what that the group decision is.
I want to thank you, uh, Bill and and Denny for coming in and presenting today. Very thoughtful and um. Uh, Sarah, you have one?
Uh, yes, I think that um, just bring us back to the fact that the planning board has has voted to delete section six point eleven. And there is an existing fix, you're, it's a little hard to figure out what the intent, if that, if we, if we were not deleting six eleven, whether you're proposing to substitute this language for the existing eleven point four. But then there's the eleven, section six point eleven point five. I don't hate to be bureaucratic here, but I I think that, which has this twelve, uh another prohibition for more than five connections to municipal sewer treatment in any twelve month period. Um, I I don't know, I haven't gotten into the weeds here. But I think that one of the challenges with this article being proposed is that it's sort of in conflict with our proposal to delete the entire section. So I I'm not sure what we do about that. And I think it would need a really careful um fit, fitting um to uh make it right. Um, even if section six eleven did remain. Um, because I think there's a whole bunch of other things there in six eleven five. So um as written, I think it's whether you're for or against the concept, it's a little bit jumbled. And we'd have to figure out how to unjumble that um at the very least. And I can't do that thinking up. I don't think I, we can do that tonight, but it's a problem without a solution, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there any other further discussion?
Um, Ron, I'd just like to say to the, to the citizens group, um, if you survey the different people that would be affected by either of these laws, a forty B would be immune to them, as far as I can tell, to either law. And the LCD rezoning, I don't think is going to be coming before town meeting next spring either. There's still a lot of thought to do on that. It's, it's really most likely to have an impact. I don't know when the Affordable Housing Trust is going to really start courting a developer. But I think they stand to suffer the most by by these laws being in place in the near term. I think they should just give thought to what's going to be the net impact or effect of getting these laws in place uh right now versus discussing them more and bringing them in further down the road.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have one more question. I I don't have in front of me the public hearings, public notice for both either of these articles. But um there should be some, a careful look as to whether or not um the making them right, whether you're for them or against them, can be done within the scope of the public notice. Um, we've identified that the um first article about access is in limited to residential clusters. And in this case, that the um six eleven four is there is an existing and then existing other um words around it, so that's going to take a little work.
Think they understand that? Good. Okay, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved.
Is it seconded? Roll call, Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Gilbert, Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
And Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Okay, well, chair votes yes, so the uh motion for closing the public hearing passes and now um I'm going to uh have a motion to recommend approval as written of the citizen's petition on to article, I don't know the number, to see the, if the vote, if the town will vote to amend Article six point eleven point four Development Scheduling Rate of Development. This is um a motion to um recommend approval. Is there a?
Sorry, can I just clarify when you say as written, does that include the proposed amendment? So it's clear that what you're, what you're.
As writ- as written, as revised, I would say.
So with the proposed amendment?
Yes.
Okay, just to, so we're clear on what's being voted and recommended.
Do we have article numbers on these, by the way?
Ron, I believe it is the, it's the revision of October fourteenth. Is that the best way to describe the text?
Uh, Robin, do you know if that's the right?
I can share that again, if you can see my screen when I'm sharing.
Let me just sign multiple screens up here.
And then we do have numbers, so the rate of development is Article eight and the dual access is number seven, Article seven.
Mr. Chairman?
There, uh, Wilson.
Yeah, we we've uh, this, this has been described as a revision to the article, and that's not correct. Um, you you can't revise the article once it's been signed by the selectman and 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 served. So if you want to, if you want to approve the revision, it's actually the amendment as proposed. I mean, the the motion as proposed.
Thank you for clarifying.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
So may I have a motion to the recommended approval to the motion as revised on October fifteenth, October fourteenth for Article eight, to see if the town will vote to amend Article six point eleven point four Developing Scheduling Rate of Development?
Does that work for you or?
So there's no um recommendation for approval.
I'm sorry, well, are you looking for a motion, Ron?
Yes, looking for a motion to recommend approval of citizens petition relative to Article eight. Including the motion as reside revised on October fourteenth, as shown on the screen, to see if the town will vote to amend Article six point eleven point four Development Scheduling Rate of Development.
I will make that motion as you dictated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I think this is an important um step. I was not in favor of removing six point eleven. So in my opinion, this takes its place in a better format.
Any further discussion?
Laura has her hand up.
Laura?
Ron, given that we've, as a planning board, spent a lot of time discussing that the uh we'll renumber the articles in time for the November meeting, but we are deferring the content and making those changes. I would be more comfortable if we deferred these to the April meeting so that all of these changes can come together and be considered comprehensively.
Okay, understood. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I think in this case, this one was not renumbered. The other one was renumbered.
This is a six eleven four?
I believe so, but I certainly will back that.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Creighton?
No.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
No.
Mr. Olney?
No.
Ms. Tenny?
No.
The chair votes no. Um, okay, um. The next one is a um, may I have a motion to recommend approval of citizens petition relative to Article seven, to see that if the town will vote to amend Article six point thirteen point five Residential Conservation Cluster Standards and Dimensional Requirements. Do I have a motion to approve? Without hearing a motion to approve, I would say that we don't approve.
Um, hold on. So I'm sorry, um. Am I unmuted or can you hear me?
Yes, who's speaking?
This is Robin Stein, Town Council. I couldn't tell if I was unmuted, sorry. I couldn't find you on the shared screen. Um, I do recommend that you take a vote on this uh one way or another, even if ultimately the motion, you know, fails. Um, I do think that you should have a recommendation.
Well, may I have a recommend, recommendation not to approve uh Article seven to s- to see if the town will vote to amend Article six point thirteen point five Residential Conservation Cluster Standards and Development Dimensional Requirements. This is to not approve.
I'll make a motion that the planning board is stands strongly in favor of supporting safety, but does not recommend this article.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
No.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Are we voting to not approve the motion?
Yes, well, it's a motion to not approve, Gary.
Wait a minute, I thought you started this off in the affirmative, just like you did.
Well, you have to pay, you have to keep up, Gary. We switched it because no one uh, no one wanted to approve. So now we went to the other way, not approved.
Double negative now.
But right over my head, so I.
Yeah, feeding your fireplace and listen.
Excuse me.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Yes, I vote not to approve.
Okay, and the chair votes, so it's uh seven zero. Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much for coming in.
Mr. Chairman?
We, I hope we can work together in the future, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just it, I'm concerned about uh, since Gary was confused, not confusing the voters at town meeting. I I would hope that you would phrase your report uh since, particularly since your your first vote was a negative vote uh not to approve, uh a motion to approve, that you be clear in your report to town meeting that you recommend a negative vote on both these articles.
Okay, that's, that's providing it gets to, but yes, we will be clear on that. I will assign the best writer on staff for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay, and thanks, Bill, Jay and uh Danny for coming in and sharing with us your concerns for the town. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Have a nice evening.
Uh, you guys too.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're getting, we're a little behind, but I have a few things which I think we can get through relatively quickly. So um number, the next item is the Warren article update. Sarah or Chris, any update on the Warren article um on recodification?
I think Chris sent uh has written something for the cricket for this week. Um, I don't think I have any other updates.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I said also. I just thought it'd be good to have the cricket. Um, and I understand that there are only going to be two Warren articles, the two sort of non controversial ones. And then we're pulling the other ones to the spring.
Oh, I do one other update, and that is I did email um and put in the directory the um new table of contents, which I think would be the handout for town meeting. Um, and there is also a tract changes um zoning bylaw. So um particularly those of you with eagle eyes to make sure that we haven't made any mistakes, please look at that.
Chris, this is Sue. Um, Ron, Chris, did you want to, did you want to just mention um potential changes to the website?
Thank you. Yeah, so one of the things I noticed was that the current website does not have the most up to date language in the Warren articles and the uh what the language of the the new table of contents and so forth. And I'd like to work with Sue Brown and get all those things. And I'd like to work with Sue Brown and get all those things in a prominent position in the website. So people can see exactly what's going to be in front of them at the town meeting.
And Tiffany is on, confirmed she's on standby to help with that as early as tomorrow, so. I think you just need the board's approval to take that on.
Well, you want, I think you have our approval to make the site. I mean, I don't think we have to vote on that.
Unless somebody objects.
Excuse me, Ron. I think there should be a little bit of protocol in this. If you're going to change our, our presence on the town website without us sort of voting on specific text before you do it, I think at least you should get the approval of the chair before you make the change.
Chris, why don't you send me the language? I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, I'd like to get the website done before, as quickly as possible.
I think you can update the articles, can't you, just with what the language we've already approved?
Yeah, I'd like to put the table of contents in there. I'd like to put your track changes, so that people can see it if they want. You know, that table of uses, like to get that.
Can we put it in our packets and then talk about it prior to our site meeting on Thursday? While we're all together?
Sure.
I don't, I don't know if you can.
Well, I don't think we can deliberate at the site meeting.
Okay.
You would need to post that.
Okay.
I really.
Never mind. Take it back.
It's really just a reordering of, a reordering and a reorganization of the website to make sure the current documents that have already been approved by the board are front and center. So it's easy for the public to access. I think that is, it's not making up new items or articles that haven't already been discussed and approved by the board. It's just organizing them and posting them and making sure everything is easily accessible.
All right, I, I think if that's the case, if we've already approved it, then go ahead and make the changes. I am concerned about, you know, touching that website without, you know, planning board looking at all the changes. Because we've been through this once before.
Great, that's why I'm presenting it. I think everybody should take a look at the website, and if anybody objects to what we've done, please let us know. We'll take it back.
Okay. Christina, yeah, sorry.
So I, I, there was a mention about a cricket article. Was that distributed?
No, it's just a notice, not really an article. It's a.
Oh, okay.
It's just a statement that the planning board is not presenting all for.
Okay. All right, thanks for that clarification.
Yep, sorry, yep.
So, okay, moving on to the cornerstone church site visit date. It looks like we have established this Thursday at four P M. With the majority of, of members being able to meet that. Sarah, has that, or Sue, has that been confirmed with the applicant?
It has been confirmed with the applicant, and I just want to confirm with Gail that it was posted.
Gail, has that site visit been posted for Thursday?
I have not posted it. I, or I, you know what? I need to confirm if that's posted. I don't have it on the top of my head at the moment.
Okay, I think, I think there was some email traffic that it was, but we should confirm that, Gail, and get back to us. Thank you. I noticed the last time they were in, we, we told them that we would continue the hearing until November eighth, which happens to be our next meeting. And they were supposed to give some answers to six point nine. I don't think we've received anything from them since they've last been with us. I'm wondering, maybe Sue, you can help me in this. Do I need to just open and close the hearing if there's nothing new on November eighth? Or, or Helene? Well, if Helene's still with us. Anyone know?
I, I don't really, I don't know what your timetable is for completing that, that hearing, or if you're confined to a, a certain period of time. If Helene's on here, she would. Or maybe Gail knows what that, that clock looks like.
I, I would open and close the hearing and then we'll reschedule. Just, just to be sure. That way we're covered.
I think we would open and continue it.
Okay, I will, we'll talk to the, I'll talk to the applicant on Thursday when they are, see what, what they've got. I know that, I know we had made some, some inquiries into their site, how that should look. I don't know if they're revising anything or not, but. Okay, thanks. See you all on Thursday. Subcommittee and liaison reports. The CPC is meeting this Thursday, right after the site visit, on a application for town meeting. For an engineering study in the burn dump. They're trying to appropriate some money for that from CPC funds. Any other subcommittee or liaison reports from the planning from members?
Ron, can you hear me?
Yes, Mary.
Okay, sorry. This is. Sorry, this has been so disjointed, but I'm, I'm on three devices and I'm still not complete over here. So this is, I'll just try to quickly go through FinCom met on the October thirteenth. And they talked about the DPW site. They talked about project financing assumptions for going the DPW site price for reduced cost of development. So they, they, the Housing Authority presented to FinCom to try to get their vote, but FinCom was really wanting some more numbers, wanted to see more of the pro forma returns before they made any decisions. They talked briefly about how much the DP type, DPW site is worth. Nobody had an answer to that. They talked about how much it would cost to move the DPW site, which is tens, tens of millions of dollars, I guess, ten to fifteen million dollars or so. And then ultimately, what would it cost to have, to kind of upgrade the DPW facility site as is? And nobody has that answer yet either. So they were kind of looking for more analysis on, on that. Just quickly, they touched upon like the Sweeney renovation, one point five million and wanting a study for practice field on the burn site on Pine Street, which would be about a hundred and fifty thousand. Just trying to see what would be planning board relevant. So they talked about getting a third-party analysis. It's not. Yeah, I guess that it does it for the, for planning board. There, there is a facilities report going, a study for, for all the town buildings in case that we have across that. I think that's it.
If the burn dump gets changed into a different use, that would come before us, wouldn't it? Sue, if it's a change of use.
So the, the, if it's consistent with changing it from one department to the other, as we have in the past when we, when town land moved to the Conservation Commission, for example, the, the planning board would want to make that recommendation in advance of town meeting. It's not needed for, to do a study for it, to do the engineering for it. But if it changes hands from one department to the other, I would think that it would, would follow that same format. Greg, do you want to confirm that?
No, I think that's correct. But in this particular case, there would not be a change in, in oversight per se. And it's like, still, still properly, that's under the purview of the selectmen. They would ask the parking director to operate a field on it, but it would still remain under the segments jurisdiction.
All right, so then no, no report to town meeting would be needed by the planning board in that case?
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Sue. Thanks, Greg. Any other subcommittee or liaison reports? Approval of the regular minute meeting?
Ron, I have one. It's very brief. Sorry.
Sorry, Greg and Laura?
Yeah, I reached out to the, to the chairs of the Coastal Stream Team, the ConCom and the Sustainability Committee, and heard back from Jessica at the Coastal Stream Team. And they are preparing to do their, I guess, annual walk for conditions and will share the report with us. It'll be sometime after November eighth. So if there's anything material in that, I'm happy to bring it or summary of it to the planning board.
Great. Thank you, Laura. The minutes were received late today. I haven't had a chance to read them. Anyone else have any, had a chance to look at them? This was the October twelfth meeting?
I did.
All right, and.
I have some significant change. Significant. I have, I had some, I have just scrimmed them.
Okay.
Significant.
Ron, did you?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am. Did you want the corrections or were you going to wait?
Let's wait now since Sarah's made a first view and said something. Let's, let's put them off till next meeting. And then Mary, you can bring your comments in. Sarah, yours, and anyone else who takes a look.
Ron, in the convenience of time during the public hearing, do you want to just have them send their comments to to Gail and then they can be redeveloped and sent back out so that we don't have to, that you don't have to take up hearing time or meeting time to make those?
Sounds great. Yeah, let's send our, let's send our comments to Gail directly.
Can I just confirm that the, I'm looking at the October twelfth, but they're dated September twenty seventh. They, the date on the minutes is September twenty seventh. Is that what I'm looking, or am I on the wrong version?
Yeah, I think that's what's confusing, Sarah, that the, the date is wrong on that. So in the header and the footer, it still says September twenty seventh.
Okay, I do have some fairly significant comments, so I just, I just started skimming them, so thank you. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
If I, just because I'm, I'm still on the call, if you don't need me, I'm actually going to jump off in a second. But i- if you have comments to, to the minutes, I would recommend you share those at a meeting. You shouldn't be, I don't recommend that you exchange them with each other by email, so.
Oh, we're sending them to our admin for, so we can all see them. They, they're on the SharePoint site.
No, I, it's just if they get recirculated to you electronically outside of a meeting, then you've shared your comments with each other, so.
I have a question about that, because this is the first set of minutes that with this, with, that Gail has done. And so I think that there's some, uh, well, maybe some, some issues around language that she's not familiar with, like. So some of it is just lack of familiarity with how we do things, so. I don't know. We, so you're suggesting with all these edits, I mean, I have significant edits. I, that they have to be shared at the next meeting, so.
Purposes, exchanging your opinions outside of a meeting could be considered deliberation. It's an issue, so.
Is it sharing an opinion if you, if it's with an administrator that's simply recording the minutes, but not with others?
I mean, I don't know the nature of it. I'm on the call, and when I hear you say that you're going to exchange them offline, it does raise a red flag. Just recommending that if you're going to have a discussion about amending the minutes with different folks, trying to get their comments and commenting, that should be done at a. So Greg looks like he wants to jump in as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say, why don't, why don't I just clarify with, with Robin and Michelle and get back to folks and how we can
Perfect.
Officially, efficiently do this.
Perfect.
I mean, in this case, it feels like we could just reissue them with, because there are some, because there's some you know, learning curve issues in this case.
All right, well, like Greg said, we'll connect and then he'll get back to.
Ron, this is.
Spent a lot of time on these minutes.
Topic, so that I, so Greg and Robin can talk. This happens with a lot of documents that we're asked to compile electronically. So we should be very clear what we're doing behind the scenes.
Greg and I'll connect.
What's that?
Uh, Greg and I will connect. How about that?
Oh, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, last, last couple items here. The approval of the zoning subcommittee minute meetings on September thirty, they were, they were in your packet. Any issues with those? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve as written.
Move to approve.
Of which date? I'm sorry.
September thirtieth.
September thirty? It's written by Sue. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, Ms. Creighton?
Yes, and I think Gary, you were not there, just.
Ms. Felicio?
Really sorry, I don't see the minutes. Are they in the last folder?
I also didn't see them, not those minutes. I saw that, the ones we were just discussing.
I'm with them. I, I don't, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Sue, did those minutes get into our packet?
They were emailed a while ago.
They didn't get into our packet, so they were emailed to everyone.
Unless I'm mistaken.
I thought they were in here.
They weren't in this week's folder.
I'm try, I'm trying to get in to check. It doesn't matter. If you want to take them up next time, I'll make sure that they're in the next meeting, the next one.
Okay, while we hold on that, we'll take them up next time. We'll put them in the packets. Sorry. So on other matters, I did hear from Sylvia Biedersdorf today. She has conducted fifteen interviews so far, and she's got three more to go. So I'm very happy with that. And I see Sylvia, you've been on all night. You have any comments to the board on that, on your work?
Hello, everybody. I, I actually would like to have, to interview all the planning board members, which I haven't yet. And so if you haven't been interviewed by me, if you are willing to reconsider that, just contact me. You have my contact information. And Sue Beckman and I will start to analyze what we got next week. We'll just hopefully complete everything this week.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything else? Thank you, Sylvia. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Ron, can I ask, sorry, a very quick process question?
Yes.
The material that goes in our, the paper material is the same as the digital material in our folders? Is that correct, or is that the intent?
That's the intent.
Okay, that's, that's what I was, just wanted to be clear on, because given the town halls closed on Fridays and I may not be able to get there on Thursdays, I just wanted to make sure I had the latest in the complete package. So if I'm able to check the digital folder and make sure that I'm not missing anything other than maybe a larger-sized document in the paper, that's what I just wanted to confirm. It sounds like that is the case.
Yes, Gail, if you do get an amendment or an update, just let us know.
By the way, the site visit is scheduled. Check that, confirm.
Okay, great. So we'll see everybody Thursday. Hopefully it won't be raining. And anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So vote.
Is there a second? And any objections? Otherwise, I'll adjourn by acclamation. See you Thursday, see you Thursday.
Thank you. We'll be there. Thank you.
Bye. Bye.